Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council, including the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency, scheduled for a meeting at 1:00 PM today, November 16th, 2023. If you would now please stand and join me in the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You guys look great today, all ready for a big event, huh? Could we have the clerk take role, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Molado.
Present.
Councilmember Marker.
Here.
Councilmember Wile.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Downs.
Here.
And Mayor Kite.
Here, thank you. I'd like to just take a minute and introduce some of the spouses and fellow council members that are here today. Charles Townsend, Charlie, counsel for seven years, and he's still alive and kicking. Jerry Downs, Jerry. Jenny Wile. And Todd Marker. And best but not least, my wife, Becky. This time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll handle non-agenda public comments. So now is the time for anyone to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So many of you may be here to speak regarding the mayor and recognize the mayor. Those comments will be done a little bit later in the meeting. So for right now, I have one speaker card, Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, City Council Administration, and we, the people. Speaking of the famous charger, the hydrogen charger, 10,000 PSI, where cars are needed all over the world. Think of the blanket. Think of the blanket. The blanket that covers the earth. It's very thin. It's composed of many kinds of gases. Oxygen, which we breathe. Nitrogen, that you can put in your tires, actually. Ozone. Did anybody ever hear that ozone was in the atmosphere? Dioxide, monoxide, some others. Form a blanket around the earth that protects it, the earth, from the sun, from the sun rays. So all the cars of the earth are spewing out monoxide. There are billions of cars. And you can see them right here on 111. Ruining, destroying the blanket. That's why there's climate change. So all this monoxide, gasoline burning cars have to be converted, done with and replaced with battery cars. Batteries have to be recharged. Two ways. One way is to plug it in, the charger, to recharge the battery. The other way is to use a hydrogen fuel cell to recharge the battery. So that's why we need, here and everywhere else, the famous hydrogen charger, fuel cell charger. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? That was the only speaker.
Thank you. Now I'd like to turn the meeting over to the Mayor Pro Tem Downs to handle recognition of the council.
Thank you, Richard. Let's put that photo up if we could, Josh. There's a photo that I wanted to show because I think this photo by itself tells a lot about Richard's 23 years in service to the city. And it tells a little bit of a story about the history of the city. That photo alone says a lot. Look at Richard Kite.
Steve, the other two parties couldn't make it.
And I'm sure they would if they could. So flanked by Bob Hope and President Gerald Ford. Isn't that wonderful? That just, like I say, that tells you a lot about Richard's history and commitment to this city, and it tells you a lot about the history of the city all by itself. 23 years, the longest tenured council member in the history of the city of Rancho Mirage, six times as mayor of the city. This city is 50 years old. It was 50 years old on April, April, I'm sorry, August, August 3rd of this year. 50 years of tradition in this city. Richard has served for almost half of the existence of the city of Rancho Mirage. That is a record of service that I think will be a long time before it's eclipsed. Just remarkable. Those who have served with Richard over the years, a great many of them can attest that Richard is a gentleman. Richard is one of the most gracious people that I know. He is a kind man with a ready smile. He has the best interests of Rancho Mirage at heart. He always has. Richard was here in Rancho Mirage when the Bighorn Fence was built. He was here when our library was built. He was here when the observatory was built. He was here when our amphitheater was built. He was here when the Agua Caliente Casino, when the Sunnylands Visitor Center, when the Dog Park, when Rancho Mirage High School were built. So he's been a part of some of the most notable development in the history of the city of Rancho Mirage, and a huge part of his legacy. He's an important part of building the longstanding Rancho Mirage tradition for good governance, for good management, and for our impressive fiscal condition. Rancho Mirage is thought of as being one of the most well-managed small cities in the state of California. And a huge reason that people say that about our city is Richard Kite.
Thank you, Steve.
And we now have a video for a retrospective of Richard's time on this city council. Please. Looks like we've got some technical difficulties going on. Bear with us just a moment. Would you join me down front? We've got some things for you. So first, we have a plaque that we traditionally give to the outgoing mayor. Let me hold it up and show it to you. Richard, why don't you stand on the other side? Maybe you can help me hold this up. So this is the plaque that we traditionally give to the outgoing mayor. So this goes to Richard. Thank you for your service again, Richard. And then this is a special plaque commemorating his 23 years of service. So let me read what it says. Presented to the Honorable Richard W. Kite in appreciation of your many years of dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to the city of Rancho Mirage. Your tireless efforts to serve the residents and businesses have made Rancho Mirage one of the most desirable and well-run cities in California. Served as council member from 2000 to 2023. Served as mayor in 2001, 2006, 2010, 2013, 2018, and 2023. And there's some words from Nelson Mandela at the bottom. It says, "What counts in life is not the mere fact that we have lived. It is what difference we have made to the lives of others that will determine the significance of the life that we lead." Would my council colleagues please join us for a photo with Richard? Down here. Yeah, come on down. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. We'll head back up to our seats, and while we do that, I've got a story to tell about Richard. So my first year on council, I sat directly next to Richard, and an item came up on an agenda where I had to recuse myself. I had to leave the chamber. So I was out of the chamber for about 10 minutes. And as I said, I sat right next to Richard my first year on council. When I came back in and took my seat, Richard leaned over to me and says, "While you were out, we cut your pay."
Did that ever go through, Steve?
Okay, now it's time for my council colleagues to speak their words about Richard. And we will start with that member of council who has served longest over the years with Richard, Councilmember Ted Wile. Ted?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Richard, it seems like yesterday that Alan Seaman called me and said, "I would like your assistance." And I said, "What, Alan?" He said, "I have somebody in mind that I believe would be a very capable person on the city council, and I would like you to help me campaign for him." And so Alan set up a meeting with Richard and myself. We got together, and indeed, I was duly impressed and have continued to be impressed now for 23 years. Alan made an outstanding choice, an outstanding recommendation, and I'm proud to say that Richard has been both a friend and colleague for 23 years. And Richard, I thank you for the friendship and the participation, and wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Councilmember Marker.
Thank you. As a Rancho Mirage resident for 33 years, I've seen this city grow substantially, and I'm so proud to call Rancho Mirage my home. As I'm about to celebrate my one-year anniversary, on this council, it's been an honor to work side by side with you, Richard. Thank you for your steadfastness of our great city in working to ensure our quality of life and the success. What an enduring legacy that you're going to leave behind. And as a resident and fellow colleague, I wish you and your family all the best.
Thank you. Councilmember Molado.
If I can do this without getting choked up. I have to get the mic on first before I choke. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mayor Kite for many, many years when he first appointed me to the Speaker Series. I wanted to be on the Planning Commission, and he said, "Go ahead on the Speaker Series. It'll be fun." And he was absolutely right. 23 years of exemplary service for Rancho Mirage, the Coachella Valley, and many agencies outside the valley, such as League of California Cities. I was appointed to that agency this year, and it was such a joy to say, "Oh, you're from Rancho Mirage. How well do you know Mayor Kite?" They adored you, from Sacramento all the way down here to the desert. You've always served with the highest of integrity, compassion, with always the citizens in your heart. And that's been a great example for not only this council and this staff, but councils in the past as well. You've always served with the best of intentions, and your residents have always appreciated that and revered you for that. You've served with grace, mentoring all of us, not only here on the dais but in councils past, and you're always the consummate gentleman. He also gives the best hugs, too. When you come into City Hall and Richard's in the hallway, he gives you a big hug. Your legacy is so rich, and I'm so happy to be here to celebrate that legacy. And my offer still stands. As you know, I go to a lot of these events by myself, and if I need a luncheon date, I'm going to give you a call.
Got it.
Okay. Thank you, Richard, and thank you to Becky and your family for everything that you've done for this city. And you're not going to be far away, and we're glad that you're not going to be far away.
Thank you very much. I will be looking after you guys.
I know you will.
Thank you. And I'm guessing that our city manager, Isaiah Higerman, just might have something to say as well.
Sure do. Thank you. Well, Richard, I've been with the city for 11 years, so I've had the pleasure of working with you for 11 years. I also see Randy Binder and Pat Pratt here in the audience today, and I know we'll hear from them later. But, you know, trying to summarize that time, I've heard the word gentleman, and, you know, I don't think that does it quite justice. I think just the way that you conducted yourself and your compassion. And one of the things I was always so impressed with was just how keen you were to the city's needs. And in my opinion, the number one contributor to our quality of life here in Rancho Mirage is the city is fiscally healthy. And you served on the Budget and Finance Committee for many, many years. And as the previous finance director, I can tell you, I always had to come into your meetings prepared. And just your stewardship and oversight of the city. And you did it with compassion and the understanding that sometimes the city should spend money on the things that were important. And I think when I look across this city, you can see many things that have your hand in it. And I think Rancho Mirage is the place it is today. A lot has to do with your leadership and your guidance over the last 23 years. And, you know, whether that's your involvement in the community, responding to residents' concerns. And I know every time you got a concern, you responded to everyone, even when I maybe thought they were invalid and you shouldn't waste your time. You still showed compassion to people that maybe weren't showing you the same type of compassion or respect for some of the decisions you guys were made, and you just went above it every time. And I see a lot of our city staff here. And as a staff member, I can tell you there's no other single member of the city council that has looked out for staff like Richard Kite. And that just shows you the type of man that he is. Is, you know, even though he was making big decisions, he always understood and appreciated the work that staff did. Even when maybe he had a different opinion or questioned it, he always did it in a manner, you know, reflective of respecting staff. And I know when you made your announcement to city staff, it was so great to just see countless staff members walk over to your office and just want to tell you how much they appreciated you and loved you and gave you big hugs. And I know that was a great day for all of us just to be able to just say thank you for all you've done for the last 23 years. And, you know, as a city staff member, you know, to have an elected official look out for staff like that, that is just so priceless. And I thank you just for everything that you've done for staff. There's also been a lot of fun moments. I was reminded of one. There was a picture in your slideshow with Timothy Bradley, and you guys were going to take a picture together, and he had signed some boxing gloves for us. And so Timothy said, "Put up your dukes." And you held your fist like this under. And Tim just loved it. He just started laughing. He's like, "Wait, wait, wait. You got to turn those things around." So, Richard, what I tell people when they ask about Richard, if I could clone you and make an entire city council out of you, I would do that in a heartbeat. Not only would I do that here, but I would do it everywhere else. And this state and this country would be better off for it. That's just how highly I think of you and how you conducted yourself as an elected official and doing the people's business. You always understood that. You took it seriously, but you also showed compassion during that. And I just thank you for everything you've done for me. I've got to work with a lot of great people, a lot of great elected officials here. Obviously, you know, to be able to spend 11 years with you, I will value that forever. And I know I'm definitely a better person and have learned way more under you. And I just thank you for that, and thank you for everything that you've done for me and for our city staff.
Today, we have Assistant City Attorney Colin Kirkpatrick sitting in the city attorney's chair. Colin, some words?
Thank you. Richard, I've been blessed for, I've been practicing for nine years, and all nine years has been under your tenure. On behalf of myself, Steve Quintanilla, and our firm, we've been so lucky to get to work under someone like yourself. As a young attorney, not knowing what I'm getting myself into representing cities, my dad's a developer, so I've heard only the opposite side of the tale of cities. It was great to see someone like yourself and the rest of the council lead in such a strong, positive manner and truly looking out for the people. And not everyone necessarily is made to be a public servant, but clearly, your qualities align, and it's a model of what others should hope to be. As everyone said, you're a gentleman, you're a prince, and I've just been lucky to get to work for you.
Thank you, Colin. Now, I've seen a few people turn in speaker cards to our city clerk, so I'm guessing a few of you out there have something to say, too. So would the city clerk please handle public comment for Richard Kite?
Certainly. So now is going to be the time for anyone to come up and speak about the mayor. If you did not, I'll call the speaker cards first. If you did not submit one, I'll still give you an opportunity toward the end to speak. Mrs. Kite asked to speak last, so before I call her, if anyone else who didn't submit a card wants to raise your hand at that time, that would be appropriate. Marilyn Bauer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council and city staff. I've known you for over 20 years. And because of my interaction with the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, I've really had an opportunity to work beside you on a lot of events, committees, and commissions. And so there are some personal things that, you know, I recall. I passed by a vacant lot in 2001, and there was a "for sale" sign on it, and there was also a drooping overhead wire right across it. But I had heard somewhere that the city council was going to put those underground at no cost to the residents. So I called the City Hall. I bought the lot that day. And now there's no wires, and so thank you for endorsing that, along with your fellow council members at the time. The Agua Caliente, Richard Milanovich, had invited us, again, the Chamber of Commerce and ambassadors and council, to sign the last beam to go up, if you recall, for the Agua Caliente Casino. So our names are written up there. And this is for part of being a resident and everything about the council, what you've allowed us to do is very much appreciated. In 2015, when I made a recommendation for the observatory, you were in support of that, and thank you. We had a mayor's luncheon years ago. I don't know if you recall, but one in particular I do. And it was fellow realtors. We sat around, great dialogue, without judgment. And I hope it starts again, because it's wonderful communication throughout the working partners in the city. And of course, more recently, putting up those campaign signs in the ground for your for your last election. So did it proudly. I tend to be long-winded. My daughter keeps saying to me, "Keep it short. Land the plane, Mom. Keep it short." So I did write a note to you the day after the resignation, and I sent it to City Hall, of course. I'm sure it stacked up along a lot of other notes. I don't know why I took a copy of the note that I wrote to you, but if you don't mind, I'd like to read it now. So I'm keeping it short. But in between each line is a lot of heartfelt memories. Dear Mr. Mayor, Upon receiving news of your resignation from Rancho Mirage City Council, thoughts of your efforts over 23 years of public service unfolded in my mind. Not everyone had the privilege to work beside you, as I did, since 2002, during my volunteer efforts. And as Historic Preservation Commissioner, I watched you with admiration and everything about whatever this has added now, because I'm hearing all the comments about how eloquent you are and sincere. And it's reflected through everything you've done. And it's reflected through everything you've done. There isn't a reference book or mayor's guide outlining the duties of unselfish actions you took upon yourself. I call you the mayor for the people. Across the desk or upon the dais, you displayed unbiased opinion, a steady voice, a ready smile, and unwavering commitment without hidden personal agenda to do what is best for the city of Rancho Mirage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May you and Becky be blessed in countless ways as an emblem of our gratitude. Thank you for your public service.
Folks, I apologize. We're going to have to take a very short break for one of our council members. So please forgive us, but we'll have to do this for just a couple of minutes.
Well, so far, so good.
Christie, we can go ahead.
Okay. Cindy Burrisson?
Good afternoon. I was hoping there would be a little more of a break so I could get it together and not cry while I'm up here. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to Becky for lending the community your husband at all of the events and everything that you are involved with, Richard. Especially the museum. You've had a relationship with the museum for over two decades, and I've been there for over three years. And you've been there for me during this really monumental time. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and your guidance. And on behalf of all of the CEOs and all of the Board of Directors we've ever had, all of the staff and all of the littles that have been to the museum and that will continue to come to the museum, I just want to say thank you very much. This picture was on your video. It's my favorite. I love this picture. And so this inspired us to make sure that we honor you in a very special way. So, because it looks like you love the trike track, and we love this picture, we're going to rename our trike track the Richard Kite Trike Track. And so that will be effective. When we reopen, we will have that honor bestowed upon you. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Again, on behalf of everybody involved with the museum and every child that will look up to what you've done and hopefully become a great leader like you.
Thank you. I wondered where that picture has gone to. No, you haven't.
I haven't. I'm keeping it. Thank you so much.
Katie Stice?
Hello. For the record, Katie Stice, Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce. Mayor Kite, there are too few examples of great leaders today. So I'm happy to take this opportunity to thank you, a true leader. A leader is kind. That is, they choose to build and not break. A leader is not arrogant or envious. They choose to give more than they take. A leader is not provoked. They are emotionally intelligent, exercising the awareness, patience, and restraint that reinforces a climate of empowerment, engagement, and excitement. A leader does not seek his or her own. They opt to honor others rather than merely promote themselves. A leader is resilient, and they persevere. Richard Kite, you are a living testimony and a lasting legacy of leadership success and selfless service. Thank you for always supporting this great community. I personally appreciate very deeply our friendship and your contributions to the Chamber of Commerce and to the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert. And I don't have this written down, but I can remember about 20 years ago attending my first board meeting at the Children's Museum as a staff member. And I was terrified. And you came up to me and shook my hand, gave me a welcome, made me feel like I had a seat at the table. Thank you for that. I look forward to seeing you and Becky out in the community, having lunches at where else but the amazing Norma's. Thank you for everything. Cheers to you.
Thanks, Katie.
David Zickman?
Hi, Mayor Kite and fellow council members. I think we'll hear a lot from civic leaders, community members, but I'd like to give, as a man of faith, perspective from the Jewish community. Noah, and from his times in the ark, he was given seven laws that apply to all humanity. And number seven was establish courts of law and ensure justice in our world. Mayor Kite, I think you have been an exemplary public servant and have led our city through 23 years. The Jewish community is incredibly proud of you, and I think Noah would have a special seat on the ark just for you. We have a book here as well that we'd like to present to you. It's a Hanukkah book. It says, "Eight Lights, Eight Meditations for Hanukkah." In the front here, it says, "Dear Mayor Kite, Thank you for your 23 years of dedication to our city and community. May you continue to shine light always. Sincerely, Chabad Rancho Mirage." Thank you, Mayor.
Marcus Alaman?
Good afternoon, Mark Salaman. On behalf of the Rancho Mirage Employees Association, City Council, staff, Mayor Kite, thank you for your service to the residents of Rancho Mirage and especially your support of city staff. We greatly appreciate you taking the time to stop in the hallways and chat about more than just city business and check up on us. And we also love the birthday cards you so thoughtfully sent to every staff member on their special day. Because of you, this workplace is second to none. Thank you for all that you have done.
Amir Afzar?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Kite. Good afternoon, all the council members, everybody, frankly. I didn't expect this to be so hard. As a real estate litigation attorney, it's not often I'm at a loss for words. But I'm not standing here today to argue a point or something that I've researched, frankly. I wanted to come up today to share a personal anecdote, frankly. And also, I always like to have a moment to point out that I know the mayor. About five years before COVID, so maybe eight or so, maybe eight, nine years ago, I was invited to join the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert's board, and I was ecstatic. I had two small children at the time. My kids are now almost 15 and 13 years old, so it's been a number of years. But I was just excited to get involved. At my first board meeting, it was brought to my attention that there would be an election for board positions and that I was nominated to be president, and I was running unopposed. By the laughter in the room, you can kind of imagine my, I'll use the word surprise, terror. Not really knowing what to say in that moment either, as you passed by, you tapped me on the shoulder, you said, "Just be yourself," and kept walking. That was really all you really said in that moment, but it stuck with me, quite frankly, because it's the only advice I had in that moment. By following your guidance and with the support, frankly, of the other board members at the time, we were able to find a new leader at that moment. And again, with your guidance and her leadership, we were able to build that trike track that we have that amazing picture of you. And I joined, and Cindy and all the other members of the board for the Children's Discovery Museum, and just our overall excitement to name it after you, number one, and to thank you for your unyielding service to the museum itself. And the personal anecdote that I do want to share is, unfortunately, when COVID came, I had to, as the president, I had to make decisions, hard decisions, on how to allocate our limited resources. With the museum making, I don't know, maybe like 80% of its money from business endeavors, the closing of the museum was a very difficult time. As we had to unfortunately eliminate staff positions, it whittled down to four, then three, then just the final two. And on that last day where I had to terminate the last employees of the museum, my number one concern was that the museum would never open again. And Richard Kite, you told me, "Oh, the museum's gonna open. Not on my watch. This museum's not going anywhere." And shortly, in a few short months, with new leadership that's already spoken today, Cindy, the museum is going to open. It's going to be stronger than ever. And in large part, that is because of your unyielding support. And for that, I want to take the time to say, "I know the mayor." And the mayor did amazing things to make sure that a resource like no other, the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, is not just still going to be open, but is going to be better than ever. So for that, I personally wanted to thank you. And of course, on behalf of everybody who's ever been involved with the museum, we also thank you. So thank you very much.
Randy Binder?
Can we start the three-minute clock, please?
And I was just gonna, I was just gonna thank the city manager for turning that off. I noticed that. That's funny. Ryan, you better get started on that new street sign. Yeah. Two minutes now. Two minutes now. Great. Randy Binder, retired city manager of the fine city of Rancho Mirage. I live in City Palm Desert, 40747 Beranda Court. And I say that because I expect a plethora of holiday cards coming now. I am. But I'm actually here to say a few words of appreciation to Mayor Kite on behalf of my lovely wife and myself. Decades of service to the city. I worked with Mayor Kite for probably 20 years or longer. We drove around Southern California, going to League of California city dinners. Sometimes my navigation wasn't appropriate, or accurate, I should say, to go from Wildamar to Corona and then back here on a Monday night. It was, I think I got a new car at that point. Richard Kite, in my opinion, is a man of integrity, honesty, compassion, and always professional. He's always had the city's and his constituents' best interest in mind. I commend and respect his support of the city, the Children's Museum, the Big Horn Institute, and his years as chairman of the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. I was told to not talk about anecdotal stories, so I'll keep it short. But very comfortable in this room, and I'm happy to be here to honor you and to respect your years of service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Randy.
Patrick Pratt?
I'm just gonna ignore the three-minute clock, so. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff, residents of the city of Rancho Mirage. My name is Patrick Pratt. I live in Palm Desert, and I was the city manager here previously. The one prior to Randy. First of all, let me congratulate the city on its 50th anniversary. I'm proud to say that I was a big part of that. I worked for and with the city for 36 of its first 40 years in existence. I joined the city in 1976 as the sixth employee, working out in the Public Works Department, out in the streets, and ultimately working my way up and becoming the city manager for my last 22 years. And when I retired in 2012, I had worked for every city mayor and every city council the city had had at that time. And I mention that because that puts me in a unique position of knowing a lot of history about the city of Rancho Mirage. But let me tell you this. There's one man in this chamber that knows as much or more about the history of the Coachella Valley and the city of Rancho Mirage, and that's Mayor Kite. If there was a headline today, it would read, "Mayor Kite: Local Kid Who Makes Good." Now, just think about this for a minute. Mayor Kite graduated from Palm Springs High School. There were three high schools in the Coachella Valley at that time. Today, there are 12 public and private high schools in the Coachella Valley. Mayor Kite has seen an amazing, tremendous amount of change and growth, not only in the city of Rancho Mirage, but in the Coachella Valley. Mayor Kite, congratulations on 23 years serving on the Rancho Mirage City Council, six times as mayor. There've been a lot of comments about your personality, and they were spot on. I must say, in the 12 years I was fortunate enough to work with you, I had many thoughts that I said, "Richard's just too nice a guy to be a politician. He's just too nice a guy to be on city council. He's, you know, he's not gonna last long." Thank God I was wrong. In the 23 years that Mayor Kite has served on the council, he's served the city of Rancho Mirage and the Coachella Valley extremely well. Just to list a few things. 2007, he joined the Executive Board of the League of California Cities and has served as chairman of the Riverside County Division. He's served numerous times on the Executive Committee of SEVAG and as the chairman. 2015, Mayor Kite served as president of the League of California Cities Mayor and Council Members Department. In 2016, Mayor Kite received the Outstanding Public Service Award from the League of California Cities Riverside County Division. There are just too many things to mention about Mayor Kite's involvement in local government. And with my three-minute limit, I don't want to have the red light and the timer go off on me, and then the mayor would have the privilege of gabbling me down. So I won't list any more. But I would like, I mentioned some of those only because it shows that local government does not just stop at your city limits boundaries. It's the partnerships that council people and mayors create, both in the local region, the Coachella Valley, in Southern California, in the county, and statewide. And unless you're actively participating at all those levels, you really are shortchanging your community, because so much goes on, again, outside the boundaries of your city limits. And Richard's been an amazing advocate for the city, for the Coachella Valley, for Riverside County. County. He has worn so many hats that, Richard, you should be applauded for that. I hope it's okay, Mayor, if I now call you Richard, be a little more personal, because I really do want to thank you for the 12 years that I had of my, of your 23 years and of my 36 years of working for you and with you as the mayor and city council member. As many comments have been made, you've always supported me and was so supportive of the city staff. Isaiah will appreciate this and Randy, too. I don't know how many times in closed sessions as we were negotiating new contracts with the city staff organization, employee organization. I would leave that meeting many times and I would count the arrow holes I had in my back, thinking that I'd sort of become a pincushion and you just get nailed with the negotiations and the city council and the staff. But I can honestly say, none of those arrows came from you, Richard. You were always a gentleman, you were on the negotiating committee many times, and working with you through those times made it at least work. I mean, negotiations are never, never fun, but you're always a gentleman. Couple of personal things in working with Richard. I remember the United Way campaigns. Richard was a big advocate of the United Way campaigns, fundraising campaigns, and having the city be very involved. And all it came up with creative ways to raise money. And one was a dunk tank. And we had a potluck in a dunk tank at the back parking lot. And needless to say, Richard's thought was, "City manager should be the dunkie." And I think Randy was the dunkie a couple of times. And what should I say? I'm proud to say, we raised a lot of money. I guess people wanted to dunk me. But I always was curious why Richard didn't want to be up there. But he just didn't want to, and of course, Richard always knew best. So he kept high and dry. And United Way always had a great annual dinner, and Richard always came up with great themes for the dinner. The staff always participated. Again, many times, we were the number one local government in raising funds for the United Way. I was very proud of the generosity of the city staff and the efforts of Richard. Another observation is we're all familiar with the golf cart parade in Palm Desert, and Richard thought we should be very involved in that and said we should be building a float. So for many years, we, my public work staff, who was very creative and on their own time, I will say, we worked and built, with Richard's help and guidance, too, floats for the golf cart parade. And many years, we were number one. We won an award for the golf cart parade. They were very creative and very innovative. So with that, Richard, I'd just like to thank you for being a great boss, but most of all, for becoming a good friend. And Becky, I can't end this without thanking you for sharing Richard with the citizens of Rancho Mirage and the entire Coachella Valley. The list of things I talked about and what you've heard about Richard here, you can see that with his efforts here, his family, his work in the financial community in the Coachella Valley, he was a very busy man. I think he deserves some time off. I'm sure we haven't heard the last of you, Richard, but thank you very much.
Pat, I want to thank you for mentioning that dunk tank thing. I think that's a great idea. I think we should think about that again.
Jack Newby.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff. My name is Jack Newby. I'm executive director of the Jocelyn Center. I am here representing the Jocelyn Center and also myself. It's been about a little over six years that I've been with the Jocelyn Center and have had the honor of working with Mayor Kite and his capacity as a council member, advising the city council, advising the Jocelyn Board, and also working with the Cove Communities Commission and helping support the Jocelyn Center in some major projects. And for that, we are forever grateful. Your guidance and your leadership has helped bring about amazing changes at the Jocelyn Center, and for that, we really appreciate your support. And we have something for you, and it is a clock, so you can maybe count your time as you, as you are in retirement, but it says, "Honoring Mayor Richard Kite. Thank you for your years of support and counsel from the Jocelyn Center." And so from the board and staff of the Jocelyn Center, thank you so much. This is heavy, but I can bring it over.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak before Mrs. Kite makes her comments? Okay, come on up.
I will. I must say that sitting here and looking at all of you and thinking that next month I was sitting in that chair and stepped down as the mayor, seeing all this, I'm sorry, I did, but I want to thank everybody for coming here to see me. Richard, all kidding aside, we've had a lot together, we've worked a lot with different things. There were many, many accomplishments that we did together. Some of them were easy, some of them were very difficult, but we got through it as a council. And to see all of the new ones coming in and the change is wonderful. I've got to tell you, thank you from Gordon, who you helped through his sitting in that chair. And for me, when I came to you, when they wanted me to run for city council, and I said, "Richard, they want..." And you held my hand and you worked with me through it, along with a lot of other people that were here in City Hall and are still here today. And for Gordon and myself, I appreciate it. Your wisdom, your guidance, your calmness was something that was, you couldn't emulate what you try to do. And I've tried to do that because sometimes people say, "Well, you be quiet." Jesus, shut up! But I always thought of you and I thought, "I'm going to be like, like Richard." But you're all a very wonderful group. Steve Downs, who is on the next round, my congratulations to you. And for all the years that we worked together, over 20 years, we had a wonderful council. It was something, as a matter of fact, let me just say one thing. People in other, when I go to other meetings in the valley and they would come up and they'd say, "Charlie, can I ask you a question?" "Yeah, what?" "What are you guys on the council, what are you drinking that you're all so in sync and so resourceful in the decisions and everything that you make?" That came from you. A lot of that came from you. And all the recognition, I won't go into it. I was there with part of it, with you and with Gordon. Love you and Becky and our friendship, and it will continue. And congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Charlie, we owe you a big pause, too. We've all learned from your serving the city and appreciate everything you've done for us. So you did a great job while you were here and I'm sure the city has benefited from that.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Mayor Kite, council members, staff, city clerk, welcome, everybody. Richard, when I moved to Rancho Mirage in 2004 as a full-time resident, you were already on the city council. And I'm here as a resident, also as a, I've served on commissions for some time, currently the chairman of the planning commission, but I mostly wanted to speak as a resident of Rancho Mirage. You and all of, and everyone else who has served on the council, but especially you as the longest-serving member and I think a standard bear for the city, has made Rancho Mirage one of the best places in the world to live. I've been all over the world, so I can say that with some authority. And it made it such, it's such a fabulous city that when we chose to move here, we didn't even have to worry if we lived in a gated community which was more regulated. You can live on any street in Rancho Mirage and it is clean, it's safe, and it's beautiful. And that's something that almost no other city can say. And I think you're really responsible at it. So as a resident, a longtime resident, and also as someone who is somewhat responsible for the service I've had to the city, I wanted to thank you, as has everybody else. I appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, come up, please.
Richard, I just wanted to stop by and have the opportunity to thank you for the things that you've done that go beyond the city of Rancho Mirage. And I know there's many people in the room. I didn't introduce myself. Katie Barrows, I'm a resident of La Quinta. I had the pleasure of working with you when I was at SEVAG, and I really owe a lot of the work that you did and the kind of elegance and class and just honesty and integrity that you bring to everything you do with having the Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. Richard was the first chair of the Conservation Commission. And I know, I think I first met you at a meeting when there was an issue with the trails in Rancho Mirage, had to do with the bighorn sheep. So in addition to all the things you've done for the human community, I really want to appreciate what you've done for the bighorn sheep, especially as an emblem of the city, and also for all of the communities in preserving natural open spaces and other species. I think that's also a great legacy and I just really appreciate all you've done. So thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Katie.
Anyone else? Becky, I think you're up.
My husband doesn't know I'm speaking today. But first, and Suge from SEVAG, thank you for your beautiful gift. They gave Richard a beautiful photo and everybody signed everything that was very, very nicely received, and thank you. And I just want to say, first of all, I want to thank everybody that came here today. I'm going to cry to support my husband. And all of those on Zoom, Jeanette Seaman, Lucy Meepos. I'm not sure Dana, Vicky, and Iris and Tom, but they couldn't be here today, but they're definitely giving us our love and support. On the Zoom meeting, which a lot of the people do, I had to laugh this morning because it was my idea to put Richard's car in that little video. And he loves that car. That's another family discussion. It's a 98 and it is now broke down once again. And then the car we arrive in today, we arrived with a donut tire on the front end of our car. And I said, "What a way for a mayor to leave the council." But we'll make it with our donut tire and we'll get home. First of all, I want to thank everyone that's here today to honor my amazing husband. It's a very hard day for our family, to say the least. I have known my husband for 45 years, and I just want to share a couple of things about him that the residents don't get to see. Watch out, honey. Okay, okay. I said, "There's a lot of things behind the badge that my husband does." And there are a few of the stories, which are kind of very touching. There were so many. We could write a book with all the letters and cards that we have received over the last 23 years. One of the things I remember, 9:30 one night, my husband, he turned in for bed. The phone rings, which we get a lot of phone calls from residents, we were in the phone book. It says it was an elderly lady in the Rancho Mirage Affordable Housing Complex. She said, "I'm scared. Her garage door keeps going up and down." My husband, as he always does, gets dressed and drove over to her unit to check things out for her. He assured her that her door was fine and that she was okay. And he came back home and he crawled back in the bed. And I said, "Hey, what'd she say?" And he said she could not believe the mayor went to her house, and he simply stated, "But you called me." Before the char house burnt, he's going to love this one, we got a call that the music was too loud there by a resident. Richard and I went to the restaurant, which was in a nightclub. We had dinner and then we stayed the night to see the noise level and what was happening there. That was a true experience, as there's a certain hour there where they remove the tables, they let us stay, brought in the velvet couches. The clientele changed and we rocked out until later in the evening. And then we went outside and rocked the entire parking lot to see what the noise level was and why they were complaining. We've gone looking for washer and dryers dumped in bushes that turned out to be very creative gardeners, hooking up a fridge and a microwave for their lunches. We've chased trash that dumped outside in HOA one day because a resident was having company and they thought it was an eyesore on a Sunday. We fixed it. When our phone rang, Richard was there, always. This went on for 23 years. Richard and I support a lot of charities, not just with donations, but with our time. Richard has worked the rescue mission, serving the homeless several times, and we even go at 6 o'clock on Christmas morning. And I tell you, holding newborn babies while their parents can eat on Christmas morning is something you don't forget. We work the food bank, backpack drives for the kids, et cetera. Giving back is what Richard does. In 23 years, sixes mayor, you only hear Richard introduce himself as Richard. People would notice his badge and say, "Oh, you're the mayor." And then he would say, "Yes, I am. Nice to meet you." Richard is the kindest soul and there always for everyone to meet, to need, and he's always there for anyone that needs him. We do mail birthday cards to every single employee at the city of Rancho Mirage, and he has done that since he's been on. And just to let you guys know, the ones in December, you're still getting your card. We have a lot of people come up at the Christmas parties when we had them stating that was the only card that they received, and that makes me sad. In a recent trip to Ohio, I was on a busk in Cleveland heading to the rental car and a gentleman sits down next to me. He had an Eisenhower tag on his bag, so I said, "You work for Eisenhower Medical Center." He was shocked and asked how I knew about Eisenhower, and I told him I live in Rancho Mirage. I told him my husband was on the council and he asked his name. And when I said, "Richard Kite," this gentleman perked up and went on and on about Richard and how they all love him there. He was a doctor and he was on his way to a surprise party. Richard, you're a legend in this city and that no one will ever forget. I know you love all the city staff here and all the residents of Rancho Mirage, and I know that they all love you right back. As I said, we could write a book with all the cards and letters and things that have been sent to you. To the residents of Rancho Mirage, Richard will always be there for you. He doesn't need a title or a badge to do what he does best. You can call him anytime, 760-770-9449, because the phone books are no longer around. Or you can, you can email him at richardwkite@gmail.com. Richard, you are truly a community servant and I love you. Richard, you are truly a community servant, and I love you.
Not exactly what I thought you were gonna say.
Does that bring us to the end of public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this point, Richard, it's your turn, if you'd like, to say something to this chamber.
Gosh, there's not much left to say. It's, it's been a great 23 years. But I did have a couple of notes that I thought I'd just drop them on you. You know, 23 years, city of Rancher Mirage. I worked with three different city managers, all of them here today, and so many loyal staff members, all of whom I consider my friend. Isaiah and Steve Q and the entire city staff, thank you for making Rancher Mirage best in the class. The city has always been my number-one passion, and today is a tough day for me to go through this process. Now, the best is for last, and that's to my wife, Becky. Thank you for your love, your support, and your being my favorite sidekick at all those Radler football games. So go Radlers. And who's next, Steve?
I think I'm next.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much. All right, the next item for discussion is appointment of mayor and mayor pro tem. And I will ask the city clerk to please read the staff report.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council members, in accordance with the Rancher Mirage City Charter, each non-election year, at the second regular meeting in November, the city council shall appoint one council member to serve as mayor and one council member to serve as mayor pro tem. Prior to these appointments being made, council members shall each be identified by the length of time they have continuously served on the city council without having served as mayor. The new mayor shall be the council member with the longest term of consecutive service without having served as mayor. The mayor pro tem shall be the council member who, to the greatest extent possible, appears to be the person most likely to meet the eligibility requirements to succeed the newly appointed mayor. Based on service records, Steve Downs is due to serve as mayor, and Ted Wile is due to serve as mayor pro tem. That concludes my report. However, I will go ahead and handle public comments now. I did not receive any speaker cards on this particular item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? There are no comments.
Thank you, Kristi. All right, are there any council member comments before I ask for a motion? May I have a motion? Nobody wants to make the motion now.
I would like to make a motion that... I would like to make a motion that Mayor Pro Tem Steve Downs steps in as mayor and Council Member Ted Wile fill the seat of Mayor Pro Tem.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are we doing a roll call on this?
Yes, I'll be doing a roll call vote. Councilmember Mulatto?
Yes.
Councilmember Marker?
Yes.
Councilmember Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Downs?
Yes.
Mayor Kite?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Now I will invite Mayor Downs and Mayor Pro Tem Wile down to the front, so I can do your oath of office. So if you will both raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Let's see. Comments. Ted, do you have any comments you'd like to make as incoming mayor pro tem?
No, I merely want to say that it's a great honor. This is the third time that I have become mayor pro tem. Each and every time, it's an honor. It's also an honor to share this dius with my colleagues who I've been working with. And the objective is that we have an exceptional city, and our goal and task is to maintain that level of excellence. So thank you and congratulations, mayor.
Thank you, Ted. So first, I do want to remind everyone that after we conclude the agenda today, there will be refreshments and cake out in the, in the lobby to, to honor Richard Kite and also for Ted and myself as coming into our jobs as well. So I want to talk a little bit about how I came to this chair. And don't worry, I'm not gonna go back to, I was, as a small child, I was born on a dark and stormy night. I will go back to June of 2015. That's when an LLC bought and closed the golf course in the community where I live. They stopped maintaining the course. They fired all the employees. They told us that it would never be a golf course again. And they told us that they intended to build condos all over that golf course. And so our HOA Board of Directors held a series of town hall meetings to try to figure out what to do about the problem, because as you might imagine, our property, property values drop like a rock. I spoke at some of those town hall meetings, and what I had to say must have registered with some of my neighbors, because within a few months, I found myself, never having served on that Board of Directors before for that HOA, I found myself elected to it and as president of that board. And I was responsible for managing a lawsuit against that LLC that had closed our golf course and destroyed our property values. Spring forward, oh, by the way, there was one thing that I had to do when I became president of the, of that homeowners association. I had to get to know people here at City Hall. And the reason I had to do that was because I had to understand what the land use rules were and what we, what City Hall might or might not be able to do for us in, in our problem with that LLC. And everyone here at City Hall was great. They helped me out. They, they were gracious with their time. Spring forward to, to 2019, we had entered into a settlement agreement with that LLC. And they, we did agree to allow them to build on a small portion of land in our community. But the vast majority of that land is eventually to be returned to our HOA at no cost to the HOA, and we play golf on that golf course again today. What also happened in 2019 is there was a vacancy on the planning commission. And what I had to say and do during those few years in defense of my community must have registered with, with the city council, because they appointed me to be a member of the planning commission. And then spring forward to December of 2021, when legendary, long-serving city council member Dana Hobart retired and resigned from council. And again, what I did on the planning commission must have registered, because they appointed me to fill the balance of his term. And then last November, I was elected by the voters to fill, to serve a full four-year term. So, and that leads me to this chair today. So if that LLC had not bought and closed my golf course, I wouldn't be here today. So the point of the story is, I guess, you never know where the road is going to lead you, but follow it, and it may lead somewhere good. And the better point of the story, I think, is public service. What I did for my community was because I wanted to make a better place for me and for my neighbors to live. I wanted to solve a problem, and I encourage all of you to think about problem solving. I encourage all of you to serve whenever you can. Serve on a, on a charitable organization, volunteer. Serve on one of our commissions here in City Hall. I think you'll find it enriching to you. I know it did to me, and it led me to this chair. I often repeat a quote that I like about community service. It's from Muhammad Ali, who during his lifetime became a legend and a leader in the black community, and he became a moral compass for all of us. And here's what he said about service to others. He said, "Community service is the rent that you pay for the room that you take on this earth." I encourage all of you to pay your rent. All right, next item on the agenda is council board member comments, if we have any. So I'll start from, let's see, how about if I go from my right to my left? So Lynn, any additional comments today?
No, Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay, thank you. Ted?
Just very briefly, I want to congratulate and thank the staff, the marketing department, Desert Theatrical, for the veterans program last week. It was wonderful. As a veteran, I was duly honored to participate. We have a number of veterans that are residents of Rancher Mirage. It was a terrific performance, well-received. We've received a lot of heartwarming comments about it. And again, it makes you all the more proud of living in a wonderful city that recognizes all residents. So once again, I thank you and thank, thank everyone for the exemplary demonstration that you conducted last week. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Councilmember Marker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would just like to congratulate you. I know you will do a wonderful job and make our residents very proud.
Thank you, Meg. City manager comments, and why don't you go right into the, I'm sorry? Richard, Richard, did you have anything else you want to say? Or did you want to wait till the end?
I'm all out of the comments.
I got it, okay. I understand. City manager comments, and then would you also just go right into the consent calendar?
Certainly will, Mr. Mayor. There's nothing in life that can prepare you for a moment like we had last week. One of our dedicated city employees, Kyle Girardi, passed away here at City Hall after a medical incident. And I just wanted to take a second to recognize Kyle. He was a dedicated city employee as a code compliance officer, too. He took his duties very seriously, yet was great to be around. And I know over the time that he was here, he was much more than a colleague. He was a friend. And anytime I saw Kyle, he always said, hi, sir, yes, sir. And no matter how many times I asked him not to do that, he did it anyways. And being a code officer, you have to be precise. You're put in difficult situations, and he handled them all like we would expect all of our staff to do in a courteous, yet professional manner. And so to Kyle's family and his significant other, I just want to tell you, your son did great things for our city. And if you're physically able, I would like to ask you to stand for a moment while we take a moment of silence for Kyle. Thank you. I'll go ahead and summarize the consent calendar now. Mayor and council, you have nine items on your consent calendar. Staff is going to pull item number four, which is the minutes. We will present those at the next regular meeting for the city council for approval. So we are pulling item number four from consideration. Item number one on the consent calendar is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1214, second reading, amending the Rancher Mirage Municipal Code regarding the public use of the Rancher Mirage Library and Observatory. Item number three is to adopt resolution number 2023, next in order, approving the disposition of three separate parcels, approximately 25 acres in total, of a larger 53.76 acres within a single parcel identified as parcel number 685090111 upon compliance with the Surplus Land Act and finding that such declaration is exempt from the environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act with the revised Exhibit B. Item number four has been pulled. Item number five is to appoint Mitch Brown to the Rancher Mirage Emergency Preparedness Commission. Item number six is to approve the final acceptance of improvements for track map number 36809-2, Polte del Webb Rancher Mirage. Item number seven is to approve the final acceptance of improvements for track map number 36809-3, Polte del Webb Rancher Mirage. Item number eight are contracts, and item number nine are demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, I'll turn this over to the city clerk for any public comment.
Thank you. Now is the time for any public comments on the consent calendar. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar? There are no speakers.
Before we go to council comments or questions, I would like to request that within a motion, that we take a separate vote on items six and seven. Councilmember Mulatto's main residence is there, and so she will be recusing herself from item six and seven. So if we can have two separate votes, I would appreciate that.
Will we also be eliminating item four?
Yes.
May I have such a motion?
Yes, mayor, I'll be happy to make that motion to approve the consent calendar, items one, two, and three, excluding item four. Item five, approval. We will have a separate motion on items six and seven. Approval on item eight and nine.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second. May I have votes?
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item, I'm sorry?
Six and seven.
Oh, six and seven. Ted?
Yes, and I'll make a motion, mayor, to approve items six and seven on the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0, with councilmember Mulatto recused.
Okay, thank you. Now we will go to item number 10 on the public hearing calendar. This is an environmental assessment case number EA 23-0005 and preliminary development plan case number PDP 23-0001. It is the Cotino Clubhouse Campus and Par House. And the staff report will be delivered by senior planner Joy Tsai. Joy, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Downs. Good afternoon, members of the city council. For your consideration, today is a preliminary development plan for the Cotino Clubhouse Campus and Par House, located within the Section 31 specific land area. The project includes a construction of eight single-story buildings in the Clubhouse Campus, Par House, as well as the parking and other site and recreational amenities. Par House, as well as the parking and other site and recreational amenities. The project site is located along the northwesterly edge of the lagoon shown here in the slide in red. The initial point of access from a public street will be from the Gerald Ford Drive Gate House. One would then take Brilliance Avenue down to Prismatic Boulevard, and the path of travel is here shown in purple. Here's a rendering of the view looking west from the lagoon. The architectural style of this project is inspired by the mid-century architecture and meets a specific plan development standards such as setbacks, heights, and lot coverage. On the next slide, we will show a video that the applicant has provided to illustrate the Clubhouse Campus. This proposed project has been reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15162 for subsequent EIRs and negative declarations. An EIR for the Section 31 specific plan was completed and certified in 2019. The proposed project is consistent with the specific plan, and no potential impacts have been identified that would require further environmental review. As a part of the project review, staff sent notices to responsible agencies regarding the proposed project. Any of the received comments have been incorporated into the report and the conditions of approval. Staff received one written comment today, which has been distributed to the council members. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this project at its October 26 meeting, and staff recommends that the City Council, A, find the proposed project exempt from CEQA per CEQA Guidelines Section 15162, and B, approve the preliminary development plan subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions the council members may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Joy. I will ask the city clerk to conduct a public hearing.
Thank you.
Comments, rather?
Thank you. So this is the, now is the time for public testimony on this public hearing item. I do have one speaker card from Julio Flores.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Congratulations, pro temp mayor. Councilmembers, Richard, thank you for your service as well. City staff, good afternoon. My name is Julio Flores. I'm a representative of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters, who represent many members who call Rancho Mirage home. We strongly believe that we will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city should require the project to be built with contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wages, and utilize apprentices from state-certified apprenticeship training program. Workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. With these type of requirements, it will give our members and many others the opportunity to work in the city that they live in. Recently, the State of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and affordable housing through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Jobs Act of 2022, otherwise known as the Assembly Bill Number 2011, which requires projects to pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state-certified apprenticeship program for projects meeting certain citing affordability and development standards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to provide testimony? That was the only speaker.
Thank you, Kristi. Do we have any council comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be happy to make a motion and say, "Wow, does that look incredible? What an exciting project to be coming to our fabulous city." With that, I will ask that the City Council find preliminary development plan case number PDP 23-0001 to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15162, subsequent EIRs and negative declarations, and B, approve preliminary development plan case number PDP 23-0001, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the staff report.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. Next public hearing item is item 11 on the agenda today, and it is a staff report on environmental assessment case number EA 23-0008 and preliminary development plan case number PDP 22-0003, North Restaurant and Town Center Phase 1 Master Infrastructure of Section 31 Cotino. Pilar Lopez, senior planner, will deliver the staff report. Pilar, please, your report.
Thank you, Mayor Downs, and good afternoon, members of the City Council. Give us a moment as the presentation slides come up. Perfect. I have for your consideration the Town Center North Restaurant, Town Center Phase 1 Master Infrastructure of Section 31 Cotino. The project proposes the development of a two-story restaurant and the Town Center Phase 1 Master Infrastructure of Section 31 Cotino, which includes the development of streets, parking, landscape, and related infrastructure to support the first phase of the development within the Cotino Town Center. The project site is limited only to the colored areas. On screen is a rendering showing the restaurant building with the view of the lagoon, docks, and public beach. The proposed project meets all Section 31 specific plan requirements, including height, setbacks, and lot coverage. This rendering shows a southwest viewpoint looking towards the lagoon and an up close of the restaurant's entrance. Site improvements include landscaping for the perimeter parkway along Monterey Avenue, the interior streetways, and the parking lot areas, as well as the north restaurant area. Staff has not received any public comments for this item. On October 26, 2023, the Planning Commission reviewed the project and recommended that the City Council, one, find preliminary development plan case number PDP 23-0003 to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15162, subsequent EIRs and negative declarations, and two, approve preliminary development plan case number PDP 23-0003, subject to the conditions of approval with staff's recommended revisions and based on the content and findings in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pilar. And I will ask the city clerk to conduct public comments.
Thank you. Now is the time for public testimony on the public hearing item number 11. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? No speakers.
Thank you, Kristi. Do I have any comment from council members?
No.
May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make the motion that the City Council, A, find preliminary development plan case number PDP 23-003 to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15162, subsequent EIRs and negative declarations, and B, approve preliminary development plan case number PDP 23-003, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. Next is item 12. Item 12 is, the subject of item 12 is an environmental assessment case number EA 22-0016 and preliminary development plan case number PDP 22-0003, Nova Lane. It is a nine-lot residential development, and it is also senior planner Pilar Lopez who will deliver the staff report. Pilar, your report, please.
Mr. Mayor, just one second. Just if the minutes would reflect that Councilmember Malato just had to step out for this item, so she will not be voting on this item. But in the interest of conducting the city's business, we will continue with the staff report and the presentation.
Pilar?
Thank you. Give us a moment as the slides come up. The next item for your consideration is environmental assessment case number EA 22-0016 and preliminary development plan case number PDP 22-0003 for a nine-lot residential development. The project site is located in Section 30 on the west side of Villa Jose Fina. The project was previously identified as Track 333329 and was subdivided into nine residential lots, a private cul-de-sac street, Nova Lane, and associate common lots, including a retention basin. The on-screen display are renderings of the different plan types. The overall design is best described as desert modern. All plan types have a flat roof design with a maximum height of 16 feet 6 inches. The applicant proposes the primary ground covered to be gray decomposed granite. Shrubs and ax and agaves are proposed with geometric patterns, and a mix of fan palms and shade trees add to a lush feel. All front yards meet the minimum tree requirements per the municipal code. Staff has not received any public comments for this item. On October 26, 2023, the Planning Commission reviewed the project and recommended that the City Council, one, find preliminary development plan case number PDP 22-0003 to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15162, and determine that the previously adopted negative declaration based on environmental assessment case number EA 050030 is still valid for the proposed project, and two, approve preliminary development plan case number PDP 22-0003, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your report, Pilar. And I will now ask the city clerk to conduct public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Now is the time for public comments on our public testimony on public hearing item number 12. I did not receive any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? No speakers.
Thank you, Kristi. Do I have any council member comment on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion that the City Council find preliminary development plan case number PDP 22-003 to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15162, and determine that the previously adopted negative declaration based on environmental assessment case number EA 050030 is still valid for the proposed project, and B, approve preliminary development plan case number PDP 22-0003, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the contents and findings in the staff report.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. May I have a vote?
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, Kristi. All right. Last item, item 13 on the agenda is, the subject of this item is City Council vacancy due to resignation of Mayor Richard W. Kite. I will ask the city clerk to please read this staff report. Is that okay? Ted, would you prefer to read it? Okay. Kristi?
One second. Mayor Richard W. Kite, whose term expires in November 2024, resigned from the City Council effective November 17, 2023, creating a vacancy on the Rancho Mirage City Council. A subcommittee consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Downs and Councilmember Kite was formed to determine the options available to fill the vacant seat and to submit a recommendation to the City Council on how best to move forward.
Kristi, Councilmember Wile, not Kite.
Oh, I'm sorry. The subcommittee reviewed the options available to fill the vacancy and determined that pursuant to Government Code Section 36512 subdivision B, if a vacancy occurs on the City Council, the City Council shall within 60 days from the commencement of the vacancy either fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election to fill the vacancy. The subcommittee concurred that it was appropriate to appoint a qualified person to fill the vacancy created by Mayor Kite's resignation for the remainder of the unexpired term. This approach will avoid the expense of a special election that would result in filling the vacancy for a relatively short period of time before the seat would be up for election again on November 5, 2024. In other words, whether the vacancy is filled by an appointment or special election, it will be on the November 2024 ballot. The subcommittee also prepared an application form, which was included in the agenda packet, which would be available from the city clerk's office if approved.
Thank you, Kristi. Before we go to public comment on this item, I want to make sure that everyone in the chamber is well aware of the issues involved and the timeframes involved in whether we do an appointment or a special election. So I'll ask my City Council colleagues if they have any clarifying questions. I am not asking for comment as yet. Please wait to make your comments until after we hear public comment. But I want to be sure that we all understand the timing issues involved. So do any of you have questions about the timing?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Kristi, if we were to do a special election, how long would the process take, and when would the person elected take office?
So with the date that's available for a special election, which is, would be in April 2024, we would have to call that election next week, by next week. And then the nomination period for candidates to pull papers would be, I believe, early December. That's approximately three to four weeks window. And then they would be, the election would happen on April 2, 2024, and then most likely they would be sworn in at the first council meeting in May 2024.
Okay, thank you. I also would like you to please clarify the approximate costs that would be incurred if we were to have a special election.
Right. So that cost, the estimate from the county was that it would be approximately $114,000. And so it's nonconsolidated?
Technical problem. Does, do our speakers work?
Yeah, it's not a power outage.
So approximately $114,000, and it would be nonconsolidated, meaning there wouldn't be a bunch of other agencies having their election at that same time, so we would bear all of the costs associated with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark. Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay, so let me be absolutely sure. So we have 60 days in which to either appoint or announce a special election. If we were to have a special election, it could not take place until April. If it did take place in April, then when would the elected... If it did take place in April, then when would the elected person take office?
The first council meeting in May?
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So we would go roughly about seven months without a council member, and then about five months with a council member. Now, next question is, after, if we did a special election after that person took office in May, when would that person then have to file in order to run in November when the term of that seat will be up?
Mid-July.
Okay. So that person would have to, if we did a special election, would have to file now in order to run in April, would then take office in May, would then have to refile again in July in order to qualify for an election in November.
Correct.
Okay. And let's see, you did answer the question about the cost. Let me ask you this. So had we been able to conduct the election in March instead of April, what would the cost to the city have been?
I believe it would have been the same. I, I'll have to get back to you on that, but I think that it would have been the same because there were no other cities having their election at that time.
There weren't no others?
In March? In this coming up March?
Yes, if it had been, if the, if we had been able to conduct the election in March at the time of the presidential primary election, would our costs have been lower?
I don't know that for sure. It may have been a bit lower.
Okay, but we do know that it'd be about $114,000 to hold the election.
Correct. We have missed the deadline for that.
Yeah, and we already missed the deadline for the March date, so it doesn't matter what it, theoretically what it costs because you can't do it.
And it is the case, so that everyone in the chamber understands, that these are our only two options, either appointment or a special election. We do not have the option to leave this chair open until next November at the time of the next general election. Isn't that the case?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Please go ahead and conduct public comment.
Thank you. So now is the time for public comments on agenda item number 13. I do have a couple of speaker cards. First one, Wayne Avrashaw.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, may I add the salute to, I'm gonna still call you Mayor Kite for the rest of the day, if that's all right. But seriously, decades of service, all the achievements, that's to be commended and saluted, and I worked in Los Angeles city government and county supervisor, commissioner, and I've seen good council members and supervisors, and seriously, one of the best. Let me talk about item number 13. I think there's, I think Councilwoman Marker asked some good questions. I think there's another way to go, that's a more appropriate way to go. I respectfully urge you to trust the people of Rancho Mirage, appoint an interim, I think that's the way to go, but an interim candidate, a council member who will pledge not to run again in November, not to run again. If you, if you do that, if you appoint somebody and they run again, in effect, four people are substituting their will and their vote instead of the, everybody behind me, 11,000 voters and 20,000 residents. The best choice, appoint an interim who will not run again. No candidate should have an unearned power of incumbency. Your staff correctly noted government code as to your options, but I draw your attention to the same government code, D like dog and not B like boy, and that code, that code talks about D to the city attorney, Mr. Kirkpatrick, talks about you should not appoint if, shall not appoint if the majority would be appointed, if the majority of the council would be appointees. Okay? You're not in violation of the government code. I'm not suggesting that. What I am suggesting is you're in violation of the spirit of the government code. D prevents, advises cities throughout the state not to pack a council with appointees. And if you appoint somebody that runs again and gets elected, that means three members of the council, that new member of Mr. Downs and Mr. Weil, would be appointees who gained an unfair advantage. Yes, they were elected afterwards, but there was a thumb on the scale that really did not respect the voter's will. So yes, we all know, the voters have a choice. They could either vote to reelect or defeat your appointee, but we also all know, we all understand, it's an unfair advantage. Again, it's four people, and you're all talented people, but there's talented people behind me, there's talented people in the city of Rancho Mirage, and they should have an unfettered vote, a vote free of, of the power of incumbency. When it's not earned, it's appointed. So again, I urge you to follow Governor Newsom. Governor Newsom appointed Lofonso Butler to the Senate. Ms. Butler is not running again. She has the good sense and decency, she may run for governor, but she's not running for senator. So you should do the same. Again, Mayor Kite, I sincerely congratulate you, and my comments are no way a reflection of anything but admiration for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I like the previous speaker's comments concerning appointee that would, or commit to running for that office, that may be a fair way to do it, but I'm opposed to any future appointments because there is time, there's no, and, and cost seems to be a factor with this city right now, and this is unusual because cost has never been really an issue before. I think the people need to vote, the people need to have a special election, and, and like the gentleman mentioned before, we have two appointees, but they were elected afterwards, I understand that, but I think we need to, we need, we need to consider the people that live in the city and their views on this matter. And, and I, and I'm, I wrote some public comments, I emailed them, I don't know if you received them yet, but I am kind of concerned concerning the subcommittee and when their appointment or when they decided to form that subcommittee, because that would have factored into the timeframe too of the vacancy. So I'm opposed to any of the type of appointment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? That was the last speaker.
Thank you, Kristi. Council comments?
No, I, I think that it was clear as far as the choice is concerned as it relates to our options and the cost involved, so I think that was fairly, fairly evident, and I'll look to the motion in a moment.
Meg?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I do want to talk about the idea of appointing someone who would then not run in November, and that's certainly a possibility, but that's not something we can do. We cannot place conditions upon an appointee if we appoint them. We cannot tell them that they may not run in November if they choose to. However, what we can do is if there are any applicants, if we do an appointment, if this motion passes, if there are any applicants who state that they will not run in November, we of course would all have to take that into account when those applicants file their applications and when they make their statements, and I think it's going to be December 5. So we can't make that condition, but we can listen to that condition from applicants. Anything else?
Yes, thank you. There's little time left remaining on the councilman's term, unfortunately. In order to run a special election, the people would have to run for a few months and then only serve for a few months, and the cost that would be incurred would be quite high for this brief timeframe. It doesn't make sense to me to run a special election, only when a few months will remain on Richard's term. My recommendation is to appoint somebody now to fulfill the short term, and we need to encourage our constituents to submit applications, being mindful that the council should represent the people that make up our community. Additionally, with such short time left on this term, I would encourage anybody that is interested to pull papers and run in next November's election following the appointment. And as Mr. Mayor said, we will most certainly take into consideration appointing somebody with, you cannot make somebody promise that they will not run again, but you can certainly ask people when they come up and are speaking to us during the application process.
Thank you, Councilmember Marker. Any other comments before I ask for a motion? May I have a motion?
I'll be happy to make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Let the city council, A, elect to appoint a qualified Rancho Mirage resident to fill the vacancy created by Councilmember Richard W. Kite's resignation for the remainder of his unexpired term. B, approve the attached city council appointment application form. C, require that a complete application must be submitted to the city clerk's office on or before 5:00 p.m. on November 30, 2023, in order to be considered by the city council. And D, schedule interviews for December 5, 2023, in the context of a city council special meeting duly called by the mayor, and include the vacancy item on future city council meeting agendas until the vacancy is filed, is filled, excuse me.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you, Kristi. We will, I'll adjourn the meeting in a few minutes, and we will repair to the lobby for refreshments in honor of Richard and his 23 years of service to this city, and also in honor of the new jobs that Ted and I are taking on. I did a rough calculation of the rough number of votes that we take in any council meeting, and the fact that Richard has participated in these meetings for 23 years, and it seems to me that Richard has cast about four or 5,000 votes over the years for the betterment of this city. This is the last vote he will take before we go out into the lobby, and I ask you all to, one more time, salute Richard W. Kite. Richard, do you have some last words for us?
Just a few last words. I want to thank you all for being here today for this special event, and really look back at the participation of all of you in good government, and it's time to go eat cake right now.
Thank you, Richard. This meeting is adjourned.